Okay, so we've started the meeting for Policy Committee. It's four thirty-one on two twenty-two. Thank you everyone for coming. Since we don't usually do it, why don't we do it? Let's do introductions. We'll start with home.
Jimmy's coming right up. I'm Lynn Pazey. I'm the, I work here.
You're okay.
I work here. I work here.
You're next.
I'm Maria Parker. I'm the Director of the Board.
Michelle Thompson. Lots of hats.
Mike Hogan, our District Safety Specialist at the Ashland Elementary.
Rebecca Colville, Vice Chief Teacher at the Middle School in here.
I'm Jacqueline Myers. I've got three kids in the retirement.
Amanda Leach.
I'm Jenita. I teach third grade at Torn and also a student at Timberlake High School.
I'm Klein Eppery. I'm a high student and I'm here at the primary school.
I'm Jennifer Ryder. I am a mom. He's never been to Timberlake High School.
Brittany Williams here.
Jennifer Haynes, Community Member as well as staff member at Timberlake High.
Shannon Moctanté. I'm at Lakeview High School.
Jimmy Hoffman, Birdswell-Lakeone High School.
Alright, so we are going to go last.
You're looking right through my head.
Last meeting, we did get through the policy for student interrogations and arrests, which is a really short and sweet policy. Without the P, it's really short and sweet.
The removal of students is short.
Yes. Wait, what did I say?
You said the other.
Oh.
That we spent three meetings on.
Yeah, 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 we did. And we'll probably spend a little more time. But, "Students shall not be removed from school grounds, school buildings, or school functions during school hours, except by a person duly authorized in accordance with the district procedures. For student is removed or excused, the person seeking to remove the student must be present, or must present to the satisfaction of the principal or his or her designated evidence of proper authority to remove the student. A teacher should not excuse a student from class to confer with anyone unless the request is approved by the principal. The superintendent shall establish procedures for the removal of a student during school hours." So, we, oh, and for those of you that haven't come before, please just chime in if you see something that you're like, "I don't, I don't think that's appropriate," or "I think we should expand on it," or whatnot. Just throw that out there so you can have conversation. It's just sort of a working, we all just work on the policy together. But I love the keyboard, so I get to type. So, we'll move on to the student. Oh, wait a minute. Isn't there, oh, here's the for, a student arrest form. I thought there was a procedure.
For the thirty-five, yeah, go down.
I'm totally lost here.
Right there. Keep going, thirty-five fifty P, the.
But we're on thirty-five forty-five, aren't we?
So, there is the.
Oh, wait. Here we are. Okay. Here we are. It's been a terrible, terrible day. This, okay, we'll go over here. Alright, so, we do not currently have this policy, which is sort of, the Ps usually stand for procedure. We would like to add it so that parents have kind of an understanding of what the procedures will be should the student need to be removed during school hours. So, starting off the top, "Schools must exercise a high order of responsibility for the care of students while in school. The removal of a student during the school day may be authorized in accordance with the following procedures. Law enforcement officers, upon proper identification, may remove a student from school as provided in Policy forty-four-ten P." What policy is that?
Pulling it up right now.
Okay.
You typically are linked in and we saw you do that.
It's not listed down here either. Forty-four-hundred is. I don't even, do we have that?
Uh, so you don't have. Um, it's investigations and arrests by police.
So, then that's actually thirty-five fifty, isn't it?
Well, no, different.
Forty, no.
Actually, you go back, did it say P?
It did, this, we're on a P.
There isn't a P.
Yeah.
We don't, well, no, but it references forty-four, we don't have a P, we only have a forty-four-ten.
Okay.
So.
We will need to get that.
So, I'm gonna pull up what ISBA asks for forty-four-ten.
Okay.
P.
Well, I suppose we should probably look at forty-four-ten as well, because when we make these improvements, we want to make sure everything's in alignment. "Another agency must have written administrative or court order directing the district to give custody to them. Proper identification is required before the student shall be released. A student shall be released to the custodial parent. When in doubt as to custodial rights, school enrollment records must be relied upon as the parent's guardians have the burden of furnishing schools with the accurate, with accurate and up-to-date information. The school should always check with the custodial parent before releasing the student to a non-custodial parent. Prior written authorization from the custodial parent or guardian is required before releasing a student into someone else's custody unless an emergency situation justifies a waiver. And, police should be called if a visitor becomes disruptive or abusive." Okay. Is forty-four-hundred relations with the law enforcement and child protective agencies? Is that the title of that policy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so anybody have any thoughts or comments about this?
I will say that the prior written authorization is not feasible. I mean, I've had three calls today. Hey, my aunt so-and-so is picking up.
Okay.
Yeah, so just prior authorization, oral or written.
So, I think that P must be an error. There's no forty-four-ten P in ISBA.
Okay.
That's what it must be without the P. Yeah, I think it's just forty-four-ten. I think it's just an accident.
Actually, I need to go back. Oh, but we've not had this policy before. We've not had this procedure, correct? The three, thirty-five fifty P?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that I don't need to.
And it doesn't look like forty-four-ten. Investigations and arrests by police has been updated in ISBA.
Okay, so.
I'm gonna check to see if our current policy is pretty similar.
"Prior authorization from the custodial parent or guardian is required before releasing a student into someone else's custody."
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. "Unless an emergency situation justifies a waiver." What is the waiver? Do y'all work with those?
Uh, we've never had an emergency.
Okay.
I mean, I guess, okay, I will say an example, somebody, we thought he broke his collarbone.
Okay.
And we tried mom, and we tried mom, and we tried mom, and so we tried the other emergency contact. They were able to show up. We let him go.
Okay. Okay, so that would be.
And that was out here, I mean.
An emergency situation.
Several attempts of calling off.
Right, right.
And finally, the paramedics had showed, it was a whole thing.
Okay.
They were on the list and they're allowed to pick up. It wasn't just like.
Okay.
One of the things that stands out to me, because this has happened at multiple buildings, so, I am not the designated custodial parent, because there isn't custodial documentation one way or the other. But mom is the one, or mom is the one that registers in Skyward, right? Dad is not on any of the paperwork, but dad is on the birth certificate. Legally, dad can pick up.
Correct.
It happens all the time.
Okay.
And it's not documented here, so, we tell parents all the time, because the question comes up, you know, we're going through a divorce or the divorce, there's zero paperwork, so both parents have rights. Mom, somebody will purposely leave the other person off, and then the other parent will show up. There's no documentation that says they can't have access. And if they're on the birth certificate, they can, they have the same rights.
Well, is that not a school enrollment record, the birth certificate?
Yes.
Okay, so then.
But it's not always intuitive the way, I guess it's written, like, it happens a lot.
Or mom and dad will get in a fight, and mom will go and take that off. You'd laugh, it happens.
No. No, some of the people I work with, I get it. Yeah, okay, so.
That's just a scenario that pops in my head, and I get called about it a lot.
But this is specifically addressing custodial rights, which, just because, and I hear what you're saying, and maybe legal needs to weigh in on this, but just because dad is identified on the birth certificate does not necessarily mean he has custodial rights if the parents are not married, joined.
But more often than not, they are married, there's no paperwork.
I say, but if they do have rights.
Yeah.
It's when the, they don't provide us any paperwork that says that dad's not allowed to see them.
Right.
We have no way of knowing.
Right.
Correct.
So, I think that's what she's getting at, though, so that we let them go with dad or mom or whatever, and then it's like, well, no, we don't have.
Okay.
But, that does stay on here, that it's on them to provide.
Correct.
The paperwork, so.
Right.
Yeah, we all shouldn't be going on a hunting expedition for paperwork. That's above and beyond for you guys, I think. So, does this need to be reworded then?
Do you feel like that's intuitive, a brand-new, I mean, I just feel like it comes up all the time, and you get called about that quite a bit.
I mean, I think having this on here, that it's on the parents or guardians to have the accurate, up-to-date information. I think that is very helpful, because I've looked at court documents that were from, you know, two thousand and twenty. It's like, well, I don't, oh, I mean, I've never got you guys a new one, so, okay, we can't.
Yeah, there's scenarios, it has to be signed.
Has to be, yeah, and people, yeah, really don't understand what all has to go into providing that. But no, I, I think, I think it's intuitive enough.
Okay.
Especially just having, I don't care that it's on them to provide the proof, not us to magically know whose week it is to have the kids.
Right. Oh, yeah.
Oh, you act like, again.
No, I understand and I empathize with what you all must go through. Okay, 'cause then, the point four is, "Should always check with the custodial parent before releasing to the non-custodial parent." I mean.
That part is a little tricky, because we don't always, you necessarily know who the custodial parent is.
Right. Within Skyward, is there like little checky boxes, or?
There's a code next to it that says, I think it says like C for custodial, let me look.
If you, if you're provided that information.
Okay.
But it's also, custody and visitation and parenting time are all different. Like, I asked a friend, her husband had fifty-fifty custody, or no, she has full custody.
Right.
And they have fifty-fifty visitation.
Right.
He could come pick them up from school. I know, that's just, that, that part is a little bit, I would say, rarer than the above part.
And I would say as of late, I would say with the course of the last two years, the divorce creep with the parenting plans are becoming more and more ambiguous. And so, they're not easily, like, have they, have they lost parental rights? Have they lost educational rights? Who actually is a custodial parent? I mean, the narratives have gotten bigger and bigger, and it's hard to decipher that. And even the parents aren't always sure sometimes.
Yeah, right.
So, that, it, it's, it is getting harder.
There is a box on it, like, in the family part.
Okay.
That says, like, they've completed background, whatever, that's a no for most, because they had to do a background check. And then it says custodial parent, and it's a yes or no.
Okay.
And so, like, I'm looking at one now where it's a divorce situation, and dad's listed as family one, mom's listed as family two, but they both are listed as custodial parent.
Okay, okay.
And the step-parent is also listed as a custodial, and has, and then there's a pick-up, yes or no. Like, it's all right there in the family piece of things, on Skyward.
So, when they do set up.
The district does have the ability to make that more easily available for people to see, but if the parents aren't communicating the information,
Whoever's putting it into Skyward.
Y'all can't be guessing it.
Like, we're reliant on what the parents put in, because we need to put that data, that information.
Okay, okay. So, I think here.
Oh, could we put it next to me, instead of the school should always check with the custodial parent? Something about this school should confirm that whoever's, you know, is a custodial, or does have permission to pick them up?
Well, what I was going to state would be like something, however, the information provided to the school is what is relied upon in determining.
That's right.
Yeah. So that, I mean, if we see, it says custodial parent, but something's changed and they haven't updated, well, that's not on us at all.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And I think it's good to have it put in there again, you know, just your reminder, like, the responsibility is on you to
Are you gonna check this every time the kid's picked up? I guess if they're picked up, again, mom has full custody, but then they have fifty-fifty, fifty-fifty visitation, and he's going to dad's every other week, are you really calling every other week to make sure they're allowed to go to dad's?
If they're, if, this is, from my understanding, removable during school hours. Once they're released from school, that's a different situation. This is if someone were to come in at two o'clock and want to pick them up.
So, this is different than like the bell rings and the department and he has.
Yeah, that I'm aware of. This, because the office, we don't have Skyward pulled up checking every student, right?
During school hours, is the catch there? It's not after school, once the bells ring, it's during school hours.
But most of the time, if there is a situation like that, the parent will message the teacher and say, hey, their dad's picking them up every other morning, or, you know, whatever.
You wanna put official information, relies on the official information?
Okay.
Do we need to say entered into what?
Or you can just say provided by? I don't know if we're gonna put, and, because of the, yeah, we're not saying.
Yeah, we're provided by. So, it's either provided, we should put that.
And then you're not tied to the fact that we leave Skyward and go to a different system, that would change your policy.
Right, true. Okay, so, on the official information, provided by the custodial parents, and it is custodial parents' responsibility to ensure all information is accurate and up-to-date. Does that seem to? Okay. Okay, anything else that we should?
We shouldn't add forty-four-ten.
Yeah, cross-reference should include forty-four-ten.
Oh, okay.
So, just so you know, and we can pull up forty-four-ten, but the only change from ISBA to our current policy, which was last reviewed in two thousand and seven.
Just wanted to fix this. At least it was in nineteen ninety-seven.
It would be possible. Yeah, it's investigations and arrests by police.
Okay.
So, if you go to the website and pull it up, on the, do you have the.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I'll show you the one part that's changed.
Wait a second.
It's having some processing difficulties.
I really wanna change this. This is driving me nuts. I've just decided.
And so, under A, in ISBA, they have it one through six, but we have it lettered. But under A, the only part that's changed is they've added this language. It says, "Before removing a student from school, the police shall sign a release form in which they assume a full responsibility for the student."
Okay, but then that would fall back to what we've just done, where it's not, well, I guess if they have a really, if they have a warrant to arrest, there should be.
Right, I think this is specific to their arresting the child.
Right, right.
And so, but they're then assuming responsibility.
Right.
At that point, they're sheltering the place with that child and taking them, and they're taking the lead.
'Cause I'm.
And ours doesn't have anything about, uh, it would be that draft, the thirty-five forty-five right there.
Right, but in here, on the interrogations and arrests, we opted that if this officer's going to end up arresting, then, because there was concern that they wouldn't be able to get the officer to sign, then that falls on administration. That administration's just signing with documented information about the police officer. So, we could look at that and make sure that the languages are mirrored, so that we're not saying they have to sign here, but not here, and everybody's wondering when they sign.
Do you want me to bring forty-four-ten back up just as a whole?
Yes, please, so we can review that one. Is there anything else within this policy that we think needs to be looked at, revised, changed, modified?
You might wanna clarify, in Idaho, there's two different custodial rights with parents. So, there's legal custodial, and then like the visitation custodial.
Physical.
Yeah, there's legal and physical, right.
And legal is the one that has rights for, like, education, legal, stuff like that. So, do they need to, except just custodial rights, is it need to be legal custodial rights? Because they're the ones that the officials say on the school setting. Maybe that's just something to highlight the legal to look at, I don't know.
Right, I think though, there, you could have a situation where a parent has physical rights to the child, which means the child can go, they can move the child about the country. So, I think when, when we're just talking about parent rights, that that sort of encompasses both.
Okay.
But I don't know, have any of you ever found problems with custodial rights? I mean, having to determine between legal and physical? Or is it just sort of a blanket of custodial rights?
Well, at that point, we just depend on what they provide or documentation, it's like.
Right.
Yeah. In typical, most cases, when it's just an amicable divorce, they put it in a Skyward. We see that they have shared custody. We don't know if it's fifty-fifty, or.
Right, right.
Every three weeks, you know, whatever is, if there is an issue, then they provide whatever documentation we need, we have to. And, we can put an alert on that says, you know, can't be picked up, and that stuff's done when we've had issues, but.
And that's what we typically do.
Yeah.
But I just, I feel like we've had situations where parents have shared custodial rights, but then one parent has all legal rights to make decisions regarding education, doctors, that kind of stuff. But it doesn't, as far as that non-legal parent kind of thing, they still get to pick up their kid. It's, it's just this one parent gets to make the decisions, but they still have access. The other parent still has access to picking up. I feel like we've had those kinds, but it's rare, it's super rare.
Yeah, but I think in just terms of picking up a student, we never really had an issue, I can't speak for release of information or anything else like that, but for just picking up a student, I, I don't think we've ever had any issue with physical versus custodial versus.
Right.
Because typically.
Do any of you think that it should, we should make some distinction, or less is more? Like, 'cause it is about a point that was brought up.
Yeah, no, for sure. I just, I think less is more in this situation, just because we don't always know in the court document who has legal, who has physical. Sometimes we just get the paper that says, you know, they share custody, or they.
Okay.
Whatever.
Yeah.
But if you wanted to ask, I could see the benefit and the difference, but I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
Look, if it doesn't impact, I mean, if either type could pick them up from school, and this is about picking them up, then I think less is more, but I do think that's important to note somewhere else.
Well, actually, this is about removing the child during school hours. This isn't about after school.
Yeah.
Right, but I mean, like, if they had, if either custody would let them do that.
Right.
Then we don't need to know which it is.
Right.
For this policy, we probably need to, or procedure.
Okay. Thoughts?
No, I think the right.
Okay. Alright. So, if there's no input, or no additional input, we could move on. Alright.
So, a question about this one.
Yeah.
Like, this one is ready to go out to a survey, or would you wait, wanna wait until we look at Policy forty-four-ten, and then update that one, and then have the updated link?
Well, I think it can go out with thirty-five fifty.
Okay.
But we will bring forty-four-ten.
Okay. So, survey will be thirty-five fifty and thirty-five fifty P.
Right. So, then coming up to the community use of school facilities. And we have a P and an F, a few Fs, okay.
It's F one, F two, F three.
Okay, don't we have, though, a form that we do use?
Um, we do for facilities, but based on what they have. Ours is all kind of embedded in, they have this separated out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I remember that, okay. Alright, so this one, we actually did look at a while back.
Yes, we did.
But we didn't go anywhere with it. Uh, it was curtailed. So, this one is raised. Anyway. Alright, so we'll just. Do you all have copies of forty-two-ten? Does anyone need one?
You have a.
Yeah. Sure. Oh, and this is the P and the at Warren. So, you can have that pile.
Sure.
And Jessica, I love her. And she should have left notes on fees, because I thought it's, our, which she did.
Are these them?
Yeah.
Oh.
Slide those down.
So, the she has one that says J D and R B. So, this must be your guys' school.
Yeah, she switched some of the stuff. You guys have put all the blue bottom, and she incorporated it.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I think this is. Oh, they are? They do?
Yeah, so the top ones are the ones that Rebecca.
Could I have a sticky note on it?
I'll share.
No?
It didn't have a sticky note.
Oh, it didn't have a sticky note on it?
But you have one.
Oh, is that all it, the sticky note says?
No, I mean, there's stuff.
Yeah, there's some embedded. Oh, this is forty-two-ten P, okay, got it.
I didn't wanna look too closely at the sticky notes, just in case I was supposed to. It was like, oops.
So, she did all the copies of.
Oh, see? Not like, yeah, your P doesn't have the sticky notes on it, because we can't show.
Okay. Alright, so.
I did.
Community use of school facilities. "School facilities are available to the community for education, civic, cultural, and other non-commercial uses consistent with the public interest when use, when such use does not interfere with the school program or school-sponsored activities. Such facilities may also be used for the operation of a senior citizen center. Use of school facilities for school purposes has precedence over all other uses. Persons on school premises must abide by the district's conduct rules at all times. Students and school-related organizations shall be granted the use of school facilities at no cost. Student organ, or, other organizations granted the use of the facility shall pay fees and costs. The superintendent shall develop procedures to manage community use of school facilities, which shall be reviewed and approved by the board. Use of school facilities requires the superintendent's approval and is subject to the procedures. Authorization for use of school facilities shall not be considered an endorsement of or approval of the activity, person, group, or organization, nor the purposes they represent. To begin the process for approval, you must submit your request online." Okay, which, does she want that removed? Jessica, do you know?
No, I don't.
That's the link.
That's the actual link.
That's the link.
The reason why it's funky is because it doesn't wanna, Google doesn't wanna break up the link.
Right, which, this was, okay, this takes us to the fee schedule. Okay. Which we need to look at.
And then the whole.
And where you'd go to.
Oh, okay.
And the fee set schedule, she said that she will be looking at after the budget stuff. We'll, she'll bring that part back. She wants to separate that from the actual policy here, make it its own.
Okay.
So then, every time we need to change the fees, it doesn't have to come back to the policy, it can just come to the board.
Right, okay, which, okay, P is the one with all sorts of sticky notes in it, okay. Alright, the admin. Alright, the administration shall approve the various uses of the school facilities. A master, oh, okay. But what if they don't? I mean, this is not giving anybody an out. This is saying it has to be approved. That doesn't make sense. Am I not reading that correctly? The administration shall approve the various uses of the school facilities. A master calendar is available online for scheduling dates. Requests for the use of the school facilities must be submitted in advance of the event to the superintendent's office. So if you have a request, but it's required to be approved
Well, I think it says a schedule, so you could say something like, the administration shall approve all requests for facility use. And then shall or shall not approve.
Or may approve.
How about may?
Yeah.
I think may is more appropriate, because if there's something that, if there's a specific reason why we can't, then we need to be able to
Even shall review various requests? Cause I think they're trying to say that like it's going to be looked at, not necessarily like whether they're approving it or not.
Yeah, we have to either approve it or deny it.
Right, but this is saying shall approve. So if they're looking at that piece, are they saying shall review or shall
Right.
Rather than
Consider.
The administration may or shall review all, um, facility request uses. Um, or all submissions or whatever.
All requests or, yeah.
Okay, instead of shall approve.
Okay, we're doctor.
No, I'm just, I like the may approve it, because then that's saying that it might not be approved. Um, but then again, the whole, yeah, we will review all of them. That doesn't mean we're gonna approve them. We're just gonna review them.
We're, we'll look at all.
We are looking at every single one and
Right.
So that we have the, we're being fair. Cause the reality is sometimes it does boil down to first come, first served.
And then put in may approve. The administration shall review and may approve the various uses of school facilities. Does that fall?
Yeah, that does. That's a great idea today.
Holy smoke. I'm dying.
So, um, for scheduling dates, requests for use of school facilities must be submitted in advance of the event to the superintendent's office. Proper protection, safety, and care of school property shall be primary considerations in the use of the school facilities. All facilities shall comply with state and local fire, health, safety, and policy regulations. All individuals using school facilities shall comply with district policies.
Anything in there that you feel like should address insurance?
Is that
I know that later on.
That's addressed in forty two ten P.
Okay.
So I don't know.
I just feel like they gave a summary of things, so I wasn't sure if that needed to be, cause in some scenarios, we require it and, yeah.
Well, in every scenario
Right.
We require it.
We don't throw it out like we really did.
I think sometimes it hasn't been provided, but I don't think that's because the school said, please don't.
Right.
Okay, so this is just listing statutes. Alright, so let's go.
Oh, dizzy.
Shut up.
I'm tired. I can't even control what comes out of my mouth.
So, oh, see little notes off to the side. Alright, so this is forty two ten P. Okay. Facilities are available for community use according to the priorities established by the Board of Trustees and outlined in this procedure. District functions and activities shall have priority over community requests for facility for facilities, whether scheduled in advance or not. Community groups, entities, persons, or associations requesting the use of school facilities may be categorized as category one, two, three, or four. Priority for use is in the order listed, with category one having the highest priority. Category one, governmental entities with whom the district has entered into a written contract known as a joint powers agreement. Do we have these?
Can I, Jessica, put a comment on?
Okay, yes, with the city of Rathrum. Will be updated once the field conveyance for John Brown is completed.
And that's all we currently have joint power with.
Okay. Well, it seems, okay. So the city of Rathrum is category one.
That's my category that we have there.
So if, if the city needed to use our buildings, correct? Is that correct?
I've never seen what that, um
I've never seen joint, a joint powers agreement.
I haven't either.
And I know that the board's really pushed to make sure that the MOUs are, you know
Yeah, and it's always one of the questions. Are, are we trying to say that this, cause to me, that's not an MOU and I can't think of any of our MOUs are specific to our school facility per se.
Right.
So I've never seen this before, as like what this looks like.
We've never had one before, to my knowledge.
So, uh, Rebecca, what is that?
The field conveyance.
So
Uh, Cooper Field?
Yeah.
The, a long time ago, um, the Coopers. I guess the school district had it, and then the Cooper said they wanted the city to have it, so then it was said, okay, but the deeding never occurred, so the district still has owner title on that property. So we're in the process of getting that conveyed over to the city.
But this is saying that they would have the priority over
Uh, categories two, three, or four, which
Anybody other than Anybody other than the school.
Specific to that one field.
What?
If that's what the joint
That's not what it's saying.
Well, if it But that's not what it's saying.
What is the agreement, but I, isn't that specific to what's in the agreement?
I have no idea, cause I've never seen a joint powers agreement.
I've never seen it either, so I'm gonna, I'll find out what that is.
And that doesn't include an MOU?
Mm-mm.
Nope.
Makes it be interesting to know if that written contract is just for that piece of property, or if there's a written contract and that powers now ties us that anytime they wanna use any of our facilities, they're in category one or wiki.
That's what's, I'm like, cause what I'm thinking about is Park and Rec, which is run through the city, and then is that why
Park and Rec falls under cat two, though.
Okay.
I'm just gonna text Jessica and ask her to send it to me.
Okay, perfect. Category two, school-related groups and organizations within the district that have organized for the purpose of promoting schools and conducting activities that directly benefit the students of the district. PTA, PTO, PTG, PTG?
PTU, but I've never
What is it, PTG? Does anybody know?
Our major verb.
Oh, do we have them? I'm just, I've not
I guess it's like, usually people will switch from a PTA to a PTO, cause maybe one role is different.
And PTU.
Or
I know PTU, I've not heard of a PTG.
I haven't heard of a PTG in this district.
Okay.
Cause it is education. We like acronyms apparently.
I know. Maybe if it's just like parent teacher organizations or something, though.
Well, we'll just try and include them all, so nobody feels left out. Booster clubs, et cetera. Uh, charter youth groups, boy scouts, girl scouts, campfire girls, 4H, youth commissions, youth support groups, et cetera. In district, youth athletic teams with seventy-five percent to a hundred percent Lakeland Joint School District students.
Is that Park and Rec, Rebecca?
No, in districts would be like, um, a basketball team or
Like a club team or something?
No, club falls under, um, cat three.
So what's, give me an example of that.
Well, Jimmy would fall under a cat, I, I believe, a cat two if his elite team was seventy-five to a hundred percent. If it's a club team that has seventy-five percent or more Lakeland students.
Then they fall in category two versus three.
They would qualify as a cat two versus three.
Okay.
Because they're the majority of Lakeland students.
So that same would be true of our volleyball teams, any of those?
Yeah.
I just thought they were considered club teams.
They are.
I would, I mean, that's how they classify themselves.
Okay, so then they are club teams with a predominance of Lakeland kiddos on them. Okay.
I was getting confused.
In district, community organization groups and civic service organizations for activities that directly benefit the schools, district students, and/or in district community. I E, or E G, neighborhood groups, citizen concern groups, political caucuses, pulling places, Rotary, Lions, Kiwanis. Spucks me. Is Kiwanis just called Kiwanis?
Yes.
Okay. And community development groups, in district, community fundraisers, et cetera. Category three, city, county What's that?
I just, moving ahead, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. City, county, and other public agencies with whom the district has not entered into a joint powers agreement. University, colleges, community education classes and activities. Uh, evening degree programs, et cetera. Youth athletic teams with, with less than seventy-five percent Lakeland School District students. AAU teams, club sport teams, out-of-district park and recreational teams, et cetera. Okay, so the youth athletic teams would also be where Park and Rec falls, I would assume.
Park and Rec falls under, um, cat two.
Right.
Cause they should primarily If it's a Rathrum or a Spirit Lake one.
Okay.
Cause they should be predominantly
Right.
Should be.
Should be, yes, I agree. Authorized adult recreational clubs and teams, and other nonprofit groups or organizations.
Well, can I ask a stupid question?
No questions are stupid.
No, they are, but I think this one might be. Okay, so we, can we scroll up just a little bit? So let's just say Park and Rec, for instance. I read this in that the policy's really clear. Does an MOU supersede this? If we had an MOU with Park and Rec, does it supersede what we have in policy? In your mind?
Well, I would think the MOU takes precedence, however, they still have to follow district policy. I think.
So my understanding is that we have an MOU from like two thousand
Two thousand seven or eight, we haven't
That's never been updated, but it, I think it puts them
Into category one, is what I'm thinking, is my understanding.
How long's the MOU in ex, I mean, those MOUs are supposed to be either annual or
It's never been revisited.
Oh, that's lovely. It should be
Which is why I asked the question.
Sounds like we need to revisit that MOU to find out what it's actually governing, um, which technically, I think is probably not governing anything, because if it hasn't been renewed, then it is no longer in existence.
So I just, that, that's why I asked the question, is it can't, so in my mind, if we were gonna sign an MOU, it has to be, even if we put in another one, then we either have to change the MOU or change our policy. We can't have conflicting docs. Or we'd have to put some caveat that if it, unless
Assigned MOUs in place. That's all you gotta add, if that's what you want.
See, that's why it's
And again, without having looked at the MOU, I have no idea what it says.
And I've never seen it yet.
Um
City of Rathrum, Park and Rec is a category two?
Hmm. So I just, when we're doing
I don't know how they could become a category one.
Unless you consider it an MOU in written Why, I think, well, I, I don't think that they are considered a category one. I think, though, that the way the MOU is written, and Rebecca can, I haven't seen it, but they basically get precedence over everything. So it, it automatically puts them there. It doesn't say that verbiage, but it just So that's why I asked the question, is does an MOU supersede policy, or do we just need to make sure that we're checking these types of things when we so that they are, cause
Right, we should
Currently, in my mind, they're conflicting.
I get you. I get what you're saying.
Okay.
Um, I don't know that, um, an MOU, because if category one is strictly dealing with governmental entities, I don't know that path, Rathrum Park and Rec, or any other city's Park and Rec program becomes a governmental entity. I don't know that.
I recall the MOU from two thousand eight states that they're cat two in that MOU.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that our schools still take precedence.
Right.
Parks and Rec would fall cat two.
But given priority over all the other
All the other categories, yeah.
Well, that's not right.
Right, so that's why we need to revisit that MOU.
Yeah, we do.
I have one.
Did she put it on the list? Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so category threes, did I just read through this?
Mm-hmm.
I did, okay, thank you. Category fours, non-district fee-based events. Sports recitals, lectures, sports and musical entertainment, et cetera. Non-district, okay. Profit-making activities, financial seminars, sale organizations
So that's, say like AAU comes in and has a tournament. They charge fees for people to play in those tournaments?
Right.
And so, um, Jessica wanted them added under cat four in that circumstance.
Okay.
Normally they're a cat three, but if they're making money off of their tournament, then we would charge them at the cat four rate.
Okay, which seems reasonable.
So practices, nobody's making any money.
Exactly.
Right.
And they're all Lakeland kids or Spirit Lake kids, and then we're, we're fine. But as soon as that club is starting to make money, then they move to a category four, it's harder there.
Okay. Well, they would, if it's not in district, if it's like, um, uh, if, if if it's an AAU team that's eclectic with a bunch of kiddos on it from all over the place, they're category three, and then if they wanna hold a tournament here, they're category four.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Well, even our own local teams, if they wanna host a tournament, now I'm
They fall under category four.
Yeah.
Yeah, any profit-making activities. Um How about we add the whole special word? Club. If we could spell it out, we have it. Club sport tournaments, um Okay. Any other language we need to put under the profit-making activities?
No, I think that's pretty straightforward.
Okay. General guidelines. Approval for the use of the facilities must be obtained from the district office. No facility use agreement may extend beyond the current fiscal year. The fiscal year is the first day of July and ends the last day of June. The person or group other than official school activities or governmental entities with whom the district has a why can't we just say category one? Must complete a facility use agreement before using any of the district facilities. Forms are available on the district website. There are no exceptions to the written application process. All fees, including a key deposit, if applicable, must be submitted before the application will be approved. Payments must be made no less than ten business days prior to the rental. In additional, if additional charges are levied by the school or district, they are due within ten days of being invoiced. For groups renting on an ongoing basis, payment for the first month is due within ten days for the first month of use and monthly in advance of the use thereafter. Um, do we invoice these people? I mean, okay. All applicants for use of school facilities will hold the district free and without harm from any loss or damage, liability, or expense that may arise during or be caused in any way by such use or occupancy of school facilities. Also, in the event that property loss or damage is incurred during such use or occupancy, the amount of damage will be determined by the district, and a bill for damages will be presented to the group using or occupying the facilities during the time the loss or damage was sustained. Applicants shall provide a, a policy of public liability insurance for personal injury and or property damage with the district named as additional insured in the amount of not less than one million dollars. I agree with it. named as additional insured in the amount of not less than one million dollars, I would agree with.
Um, and then could we add in, after that, the board reserves the right to require increased insurance coverage on any event?
Okay.
That was a request of Jessica.
So, the board, what was that?
Uh, the board reserves the right to require increased insurance coverage on any event.
So, the board reserves the right to require increased insurance coverage based on the facility use request.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Keys and or key cards with codes to buildings and locked fields may be issued when applicable. Uh, do we issue the swipey cards?
We do.
Okay. Are we making sure we're getting them back?
Yes, so, I, I collect a deposit, and they pick them up, and then, um, if. They have within so many days after the event to return them, or Justin just shuts them off, and I keep the deposit, which more than covers the key card.
Okay.
My question is, um, Rebecca, are we still getting keys?
Uh, there are keys for internal, so into gyms and things like that, which we take key deposits back, which will get their deposit back after they return the key.
Okay. Prior to the issuance of any key or key card, the district must receive the payment of a refundable deposit and issue a key receipt. Keys and key cards must be returned by the date specified on the key receipt, but not less than ten days after the last scheduled facility usage. Any cost to change locks for the loss of a key may be assessed. And build to the, uh, what are we calling them, anything? Insofar as is practical, all meetings shall end in sufficient time to clear the building by the time established by the district. And if the event goes beyond the time designated in the facility use agreement, additional charges shall apply. In the event a conflict should develop between a school function and a rental request, the district reserves the right to cancel the rental reservation by giving notice of cancellation to the applicant. Okay. Uh, renting organizations may cancel a contract contracted facility use application by a written notice of cancellation delivered to the district office no less than forty-eight hours in advance of beginning time.
Michelle.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, should we put, um, some kind of timeframe on the bullet point right above that one, since there's one?
If there's a conflict?
Right.
Um. Notice ca- okay, so.
Like if someone's had something rented for two months, can the district cancel on the, the day before, is that?
We can, if we, if, if it's a home team and game that got canceled, and we have to host it, because our, our school takes precedence over any other function, so.
That may ju- I mean, that may happen from time to time.
Especially with our weather here, like, say it's an outdoor sport, we have, um, the gym rented out, and they have to bring that outdoor sport in, we still take precedence over an outside group.
Yeah. Maybe we should just make that super clear then, so that somebody renting it really gets that, that it could happen.
Mm-hmm.
Fast.
That's a good one.
Is that?
Mm-hmm.
Which, okay. So, renting organizations may cancel contracted, uh, facility use application. Okay, what happens if they don't cancel within forty-eight hours?
Well, our practice is usually, usually they give us more than forty-eight hours in advance.
Right. I would think so.
I, I can't think of a time that we haven't received forty-eight hours, minutes notice, so. I really don't know what our practice will be.
We should still hold them responsible for some of the building use fees that they owe.
I mean, we probably should, because that could've gone to somebody else to rent out, so.
But in that conversation, and in the same bullet, we put cancellation by the district, if somebody, if we had to cancel on somebody, would we give that money back on the same token?
I would say yes.
Yeah.
I mean, if we are canceling because we're.
Right.
We're, they're gonna give them their.
So, I feel like the next two bullets, we potentially talk about the money exchange, we probably need to address that if the district, or the council, too, you know?
That's it.
Right.
Or fees assessed, yeah.
Yeah.
If someone's unable to comply with the forty-eight hour.
Oh, okay.
Timeframe. If we see there's a. These will be. These will be more than.
If a group does not show for facility rental, the district reserves the option of canceling future facility use agreements for that group. In addition, any costs incurred by the district upon a late cancellation or no-show of a confirmed use must be paid by the leasing. Okay. During peak gymnasium use months, which I think is all twelve of them. Gym rentals may be limited for category two, three, and four groups to provide gym time to as many groups as possible. The gymnasium and all classrooms rented are subject to special rules and conditions, see section E. All right, an application must be submitted to the district office at least ten business days prior to the scheduled event. Facility rentals except seasonal rentals for gyms and athletic fields are approved on a first come, first served basis in order of group category listed in section A. Uh, seasonal rentals, categories one, two, and three groups may apply for gym and field rentals on a seasonal basis. All applications must be renewed annually. Uh, seasonal applications will be accepted on the opening day or first business day following the opening date. I don't understand that.
So, that July, you said that your first calendar?
Oh.
Is that what that's saying?
Yeah.
If it falls on a weekend or a behind day.
So, that's what our.
Yeah.
It reopens for the next school year.
Okay.
So, you better be on the calendar, ready to jump in.
Midnight.
Yep, there is, yeah, a few of them that are.
Acceptance of.
Like getting your concert tickets.
Acceptance of. Application will end on the closing date or on the first business day following. Wait. Okay. Um, sports season months, okay, open date, okay, close date, and approval date.
Can I ask one more question, Rebecca?
Mm-hmm.
I feel like, and I don't know this to be true, but this is what I think is happening sometimes, or what I hear is happening, that we'll have groups that will just blanket and try to take just five days, or ten days, or twenty days, and they don't really have a schedule per se, but they're just thinking that they might, they don't have teams, they don't have some of that. And so, then it blocks out, so nobody else can use it, is there a way, we have to say that, like, you can only get this much time, and you actually have to have a scheduled event, so it's not just, like, they get it down really early.
That would be very nice to add in here, I don't know how, wanna word that.
I just.
Okay, so what's the situation?
Well, people will come in really early on, and when they know that they, it's gonna open up, and they'll just blackout thirty days. They don't have a schedule yet, and so then, when other teams will try to go in, or they'll, people will pop in, it's not being used, but they can't put in a facility to use because it was blocked out, and Rebecca has no way to know if they're actually coming or going, and so, is there a way that we, they can't just, in order to block out those days or reserve those days, they have to submit a schedule with the, like, the team or something, the practice schedule.
Just like they have to.
That is an issue, yeah.
Just like they have to submit a player roster to pr- prove, prove that their kids are seventy-five percent. I think it would be great if we could word it where they need to.
Okay.
Um, give us their schedule.
So, it's just, it really is being used, cause we have so many people that wanna access it, so just being able to work collaboratively, if you just blackout a bunch of days, and then there's literally days where the gyms aren't being used, but nobody else knows that.
Well, it talks about the no-shows prior, but.
But she'd have no way.
But I'm here, so I can tell, so unless the athletic director.
Well, it's evening stuff, we don't always know, and we aren't gonna like, we don't go every day and check, did our non-school group show up for practice?
Right.
Like. We don't know to report to you that they didn't actually show up, and now they need to be put on that list that says. I just think there's a way to write that in there with a little bit more, that there's an, actually, you have a schedule, you have a team, there's gonna be a point person, it's not just this blanket.
Or if we, if we find out that they're not using it.
You're gonna lose the rest of your days.
We could. Have the ability to cancel their event.
I don't know how much of an issue, I've just heard it come up as of late, so I just thought it would be.
I think it comes up quite a bit, actually.
Could you put a disclaimer in that just says, like, if this policy or whatever is being abused, or the district determines that it's being abused and not utilize it.
We have the right to.
Yeah, and not let you have future reservations.
If Rebecca's getting a call saying, hey, we've been in this gym two times now, and this group has it, and they haven't been in there.
I'd love to use it, but. We just have so many people that are constantly asking, that I feel like we have to turn away, and then when you go in there, it's really, sometimes it's. They're not there.
If we're issuing out a key card, can we tell if they're accessing the building?
Yeah, it would just.
I mean, she'd have to.
Make their jump. There's just.
That's one more thing to check on.
You'd have to go check, Justin would have to, I mean, it just.
Oh, well, you do get teams that cancel their practice from time to time.
And that happens, like I said, everybody got sick, we're not gonna have practice.
To me, it would be.
Once is one thing, but if it's, yeah.
I don't know, I just, if there are way to write it in there, or that caveat is put in there, just. You can't reserve days if you're not a hundred percent for sure you're going to use. If there are other teams that would like access to the gyms, and there's only so much gym space available in our middle-time community.
Okay, this is probably one of those dumb questions, but let's say it's a middle school. An AAU team with less than seventy-five percent Lakeland students has reserved the gym.
Mm-hmm.
And then an AAU team with more than, so like, category two, or.
Mm-hmm.
I think, comes in and wants to use the gym at that time, then do, we have to kick the category?
Three.
The other team out, and so.
I think once you're, it's reserved, you can't. Once you're already reserved, it's first come, first served.
Okay. That's what I was thinking, but then I just wanted to be sure.
Cause then nobody would stay. Nobody would honor the ten-day rule.
Yeah.
Right, they show up.
They just wait till the end, yeah. Okay, but I need to see that.
Applications, um.
Do they give? Priority within a building for use? As well?
Is there a priority within, so if Lakeland High School wanted Lakeland High School, do they have priority?
Or, like, a Lakeland in another. Wants to use. Timberlake. It doesn't matter, cause it's something Lakeland.
Applicants.
A player roster.
Let's just say post falls.
Right.
Last small team.
They're.
Yeah, I agree.
Just throwing ideas off the table.
So, we're kind of mimicking, like, she was saying, a player roster must be submitted for verification, we had that in the beginning. Should we then just add that caveat on to?
No, but I'm just saying, even within our.
Section B where it talks about.
Timberlake Elite Basketball.
And if they do not.
If seventy-five percent Lakeland. They will take precedence over.
But that's only on the.
Event schedule must be provided.
But it's still, it's a first come, first served.
Between the two, like if it was renting the facility, and then.
You could jump in and take up.
Timberlake's.
Gym's the same formula that we used originally.
Teams could get in there if they had.
Right. Um.
Cause they follow that.
An event schedule must be submitted for verification prior to.
So, isn't that happening right now, but it just is.
Yeah, review?
Yeah, I mean, uh, not so much.
Yeah.
I mean.
Because we don't want them getting approved.
Timberlake AAU.
Without you, us being to review a schedule.
It's that little guys, that Ryan has a team.
And they're at Clint Lakes.
Yeah. Yeah. So, there's a couple of side conversations happening, but one of the conversations is, so if it's first come, first served, let's just say that a post falls team comes in, wants to use our facility, and they happen to beat one of our Lakeland teams just by a day. Once it's reserved, it's reserved. Uh, you, we could put a caveat that at the start of every season, that there's a window where the Lakeland, seventy-five percent of the Lakeland teams, the secure window to do it, and then the out Lak- so it's staggered?
Okay.
Now, that would be.
I mean.
That would be something too. Lakeland High School never grant the, a post falls, an all post falls team using our facility, most likely.
That doesn't happen?
No, it would be this way to prove it.
Yeah, we usually don't. Okay. I was just thinking, if that's an issue, you could do a stagger.
Rebecca. Well, it's that after, after it's already approved.
Does it's first come, first served?
Prior to review? Prior to approval?
First review?
Yeah, I would say approval.
I was like, who's that?
I have to isolate. Or can we? None of this.
Yeah, you can imagine how you have to point that out, although it's here by myself, working on the agenda.
So, we're heading it with the facility rentals and then seasonal rentals. They need to include practice and game schedules.
So, they're a little bit more organized.
Mm-hmm.
I think what happens is sometimes people just. Or do you want to just put practice in, and then when you put game, put game slash event schedules?
Yeah.
I just think if it was a drama group that wanted to come in and use our comment, it might not be a sporting event, but what else it could be that could be an outside event planned? They're gonna have a drama practice. Good job, she's. She's a global thinker.
Okay. Anything else we wanna add to try and, um. Never look down, so that people aren't just, I'm gonna take out the months of, you know, September through December and call her good.
Yeah, September, March's the best time I want all of them.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, yeah, I still think, I still think it's gonna be hard to hold somebody accountable, they can, you know, I could come up with a practice schedule, for example, that looks really nice. Who's just, I mean, it's all about accountability at that point.
Aren't they still paying the fee anyways? If they rented it, whether they use it or not?
Well, cat two, there's no fees for.
Okay.
We don't charge for cat two.
Is that what we could add in, the, what she was saying about this is abused, or?
Well, I was just thinking, is it something where we just have, maybe Justin runs a report for you, for some of those auxiliary cards? That's a lot of work.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Building special degree.
Well, I mean, I think it would kinda work itself out, because if you put your practice schedule together and reserved it for Wednesday, Friday night.
Yeah, but then I'm gonna compare it to every schedule, and.
Then you decide to do Tuesday, Thursday, well, you don't have the chance for Tuesday.
I just don't know in my day where I'm.
Right.
I mean, I would think, unless you set, I don't have a practice Monday, or Thursday.
Well, and I.
Well, and I remember like running the club, cause we use the facilities, you know, the outdoor grounds, and it was.
No, it's easier for me to talk to that. Yeah.
Yeah.
We just, uh, parents, when you got your coaches and everything, it was practices, the club actually dictated, look, practices will be Tuesday, Thursday at. This school or that school and, you know, you have this window of time. So we made sure people were where they needed to be to do their little practices, and then the games were always, you know, on a specific time. One thing that I have noticed about Park and Rec with their younger little people's schedules is everything's on the specific time schedule, so I think they're, they've got that kinda dialed in.
Yeah.
But I don't know about the practices in the sense of, I mean, you've got parent volunteers and.
Right, yeah.
You know, parents don't get off work until whenever, so, I don't know.
It's not easy.
No, I know.
Yeah, like it's, there's no easy answer, which is the tricky part.
No. So that's a start, and maybe we can have the board weigh in on additional language. All applications are held until the seasonal close deadline and then scheduled in the following order, priority for facility use is by group classifications listed in section A. Traditional indoor sports have priority over outdoor sports when scheduling an indoor facility. If all factors are essentially equal, the district may use a lottery to determine priority. If. Seasonal rentals may be scheduled after the application window if space is available. Uh, these requests will be considered on a first come, first served basis.
Has that ever happened?
No. What, the lottery?
Or just, or the other part, that there's a space available.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Expectations and proper conduct, alcoholic beverages, tobacco, narcotics, and other dangerous or illegal drugs shall not be permitted in district. Or school facilities or on district or school property at any time. Users shall not alter any facilities. School property, facilities, and equipment will be used in careful and prudent manners so as to prevent any loss, defacement, or damage to them. Good order.
Can we put, um, can we put, fees shall apply in, in this bullet?
Well, it's on Jessica and I's, the blue language is, um. Okay. ISBA stuff, but she wondered if we could add that in there.
Okay. I'm just curious why it's not here on my draft.
Um, I think she tweaked it, she did a different draft and tweaked it.
Okay.
Because you guys have all of this language at the bottom of this, your guys' draft, and so we took some of that language and just moved it up where it makes sense. Rather than to tag it all at the bottom. Oopsies.
Oh, okay.
Should we put anything in here about extracustodial duties, I mean, something that happens quite often is we come in after.
Is that part of your fee schedule?
Cause I think there's a difference between a custodian picking up and, and cleaning after an event or a practice. There's also something where it's a big stain or a big mess that they're having to spend a lot of time.
Well, the thing that comes to mind for me, I hear a lot about with the bathrooms.
Well, yeah, we, sometimes we have to provide custodians during the day because of that, like we know it's an all-day volleyball tournament, whatever, we, we s- we have to staff it. Because, and I think it's part of your fee schedule, it was my guess on those things, right?
Right.
Um, but it does get tricky if it was like a not-for-profit event.
But if it's category two, we don't charge for anything.
And if there's an expense occurred in time.
There is, there are events with paper products and soap and.
I don't know why this, this should just be no. I don't get why we're saying, where rules so specify. It should just be, uh, no item of equipment may be used except by qualified, by qualified operator.
That was straight out of the ISBA language.
Okeydoke.
So. Which you'll see at the bottom, you guys, or somebody linked it all the way at the bottom.
That's, I, I'm assuming.
Oh.
All of that, so what Jessica and I did with our draft.
Oh.
Was we took some of that ISBA language and put it, yeah.
Okay, I didn't understand. Got it.
I was trying to tell you that, but.
I wasn't listening.
But we, we moved some of that up where it made more sense to be instead of at the bottom.
Okay, gotcha.
So if we already have it embedded, we can just take out all this right here, so you're saying, cause you guys have it.
It's not embedded though, so.
Or in the future when she sees the blue, instead of typing it, she can copy and paste it.
Right, yeah. That's why, um, I don't know why Jessica didn't just do it on your guys' draft.
Okay, so she.
Cause I know one of the things that, well, this is where it says.
She did not include this portion. She took the bottom portion.
Uses when conjunctional duties, must be specified, requested in writing may be granted by procedure, by your permission to use facilities is granted. So I do know, um, Lisa's written pretty clear about this, she definitely does not want any of the sound machines, the.
Right, we've never done.
Any of the A D equipment.
Yeah.
Just because it, it's too costly and.
Too expensive, yeah.
It's projectors and.
Mm-hmm.
Glow-up screens and all that stuff regardless.
Yeah, we've never allowed it, and I think it says that, but is it really, really clear? Like, do we say no A D, audio, you know?
Well, what other, I mean, is there other equipment that we include with a facility's?
Volleyball nets.
Yes, I was saying, the timing system, like.
Chairs, tables. podiums.
Timing system to run the scorecard.
Microphones.
Like that's gonna be, they're gonna want that on set.
Matt for wrestling tournaments and a lot of equipment.
Okay.
The one thing we don't allow is use of any of the.
Technology.
Yeah.
Like, I guess technically, score systems technology, but, yeah.
But I feel like that is.
It's important, yeah.
It's sport specific, yeah.
And one of the, um. One of the high schools requested that with like the stage and the theater kind of, um, no balloons. Balloons get crossed in the wires and it, it is a huge issue.
Oh, Lakeland, yeah.
Where at?
Um, in the commons.
Commons.
Yeah, and it takes.
With the wiring and they, it's so high up there and it just causes a huge issue.
Well, in order for us to get those down, I mean, it's so high up there, you'd have to get a lift.
Mm-hmm. They just said, could we just say no balloons in the commons?
Yeah.
Cause people let them go and then the string is everywhere and then it gets tangled in the wires. I couldn't remember what's balloon is, but, yeah, we should tell them. Allison, who's always. Which I wouldn't have thought of, so I'm glad that she gave that feedback.
Mm-hmm.
It would be nice to know why Jessica didn't include the entire paragraph, cause I do think there's valuable, because if we are lending out other equipment. Such as volleyball nets or balls or whatever.
It's gonna warrant, right, all equipment used must be thoroughly cleaned.
Oh, there's an N in there, that's your blue line. Thank you. Okay. Um. No concessions or other items will be sold in or on school property or facilities unless approved in writing. Does that occur? Do we know?
Yeah, it's about like raffle tournaments and all of that. So. I mean, some of these paid tournaments that we have, and they sell food and then at some point it's.
No, no. No, but what I'm saying is that we are getting it, that they're requesting to be able to do that and we're.
In the, yeah, in the facility use policy, it's a, or, or the M L schedules, it's a request that they can check.
Okay, gotcha.
We do try to hold people true to what they're asking for, because we've had some groups come back and say, well, now we want, now we want, now we want. And Rebecca's had to come back and say, well, we didn't charge you for that and we don't do this or.
Right, right.
I feel like you do a great job of trying to.
I'm trying to accommodate people, but.
So are they using our concession equipment?
Currently, we have not.
Okay.
Done that, it's just written there that we would, but normally, no, it's never happened.
Cause I, I. No, no. Okay. Okay.
Sometimes our concessions, per, like our boosters provides concessions, but that's usually an agreement between those two groups where they're like, hey, we got a volleyball tournament.
Right.
Do you guys wanna sell concessions, but then our boosters runs it, meets their own people.
Right, and they're the ones that usually oversee it for the sporting events anyway, so, yeah.
Yeah, yep, yep. It's not really our thing.
No. Okay, except for properly licensed bingo and or raffles, for the sole purpose of fundraising for civic or charitable purposes, gambling shall be prohibited. In any of the district facilities. What, what? The use of the district's facility shall not be granted to any individual or organization if the individual or organization will use the buildings, grounds, or facilities. Or or to promote illegal activities. The adequate supervision, or would that adequate supervision be provided by the requesting organization or individual to ensure proper care and use of the district facilities?
Is that where you should put something that custodial services might be?
I think that's in there somewhere, or you could be wrong.
I saw it somewhere. Do you feel, is it somewhere that custodial?
Yeah, I'm just gonna find it.
Um, I know in the past, we've said group number two, um, category twos don't have, we don't charge any fees, but.
We don't.
I know, but could we change that, I mean, do we, if we're having.
Well, but if the category three is, like I guess this is where we're at, they become a category four, whatever it is, because now they're profit-making and it's a tournament. Then that changes, wouldn't it, and they would then have, be.
But category two is say like Parks and Rec, we don't charge them for paper products or anything that they're using in our buildings.
All the time.
And they're, and they're all the time, yeah.
Yeah.
And if they have an all-day event, then do we have to staff that? Or does, I mean, I feel like I've heard that Matt's been called into stuff like that, where he's had to come in and.
For Parks and Rec?
Well, that's my understanding, but am I wrong? Where he's had to come in to help with that because there was no toilet paper, the bathroom, I mean.
That's usually a tournament, Parks and Rec really only, um, utilizes.
Just does practice.
Elementary schools for the most part. Except for like their five-on-five.
Yeah, we have had it where, when we don't have custodial.
Look at there.
We deny requests if, if we don't have custodial to cover it.
Sorry.
So, I know they have a whole, but it says no posters, banners, or signage. Maybe attached, is that where we want to maybe include, no balloons?
Oh, that's probably the right place to put it.
They're gonna say that's random, but it totally makes sense why.
Well, like we have the senior parents come in on next month.
Yeah, and they're gonna wanna decorate, that's fine, but you don't get to decorate with balloons, like, and we probably need to communicate that to them, cause it's maybe gonna be new information for them, but. Let me ask this, does Timberlake have problems with balloons?
I, Allison just emailed us, so I've never heard.
That was today, was the first I'd heard about it.
I would say in, in Timberlake's lunchroom, oh, Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong, how ho- how high is that ceiling in that lunchroom?
Um.
Can you get there with a ladder?
I would think so, yeah, it's not terribly high. Like in our comments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not a superficial person, but. I mean, if I'm standing there, I could see it, but in my mind.
Ours would take an extremely long ladder, typically when we have stuff somewhere or less, we would have.
I mean, yeah. Yeah, but it'd be easy to get.
We have to get a lift, but, yeah.
I guess play a double.
I mean, have.
We could, we could put it in there, they still have to go to a draft and I could always have.
I know we can tell some of their parents and they can't question.
We're gonna allow our schools to do it.
Does that include elementary?
Yeah, could be something approved upon, like per building.
Cause I know we use balloons to decorate for like art night.
Yeah, or use a balloons needs prior approval, I don't know.
Yeah.
But it could just be.
That'll get to approval from principal and then Jimmy just knows he's not ever going to approve it.
They, sometimes you use it in the gym, when they use it in the night, and if that's not, if even if she was the commons or, you know, I don't know.
I, I feel like it was specific to the commons.
It was specific to the commons.
Would that be on the, uh, facility use form?
We could add that in there.
Like, will you be using balloons?
Mm-hmm.
If so, where, and then that could be a caveat to approval.
Yeah, I could definitely add that into the facilities.
We'll approve it, but we will pop all of it.
Yeah, like all the schools, people who use the law.
Or we form a darts team. Yep.
But it does say, users shall not post any materials to walls, ceilings, floors, fences, um, unless the district has proved the materials in advance of use.
You could add balloons there and just say, and then it would be building.
It would have to be approved, yeah. And then I'll add it into the actual form. You can go as far as balloon, streamers, confetti, all that stuff.
Gosh, call it litter.
Litter. Litter.
Litter is not allowed or?
Or upon approval.
Yeah, I think we learned our lesson, we'll set it for better for now.
What other party?
Silly string.
Silly string.
These are.
Yes, P A from the bottom.
That's brought up.
Um.
Put a bomb.
I can stick it in.
Like you wanna talk about waters.
Got it.
I just love that I shoot my spot.
Yeah, I like it.
That might have to go to us.
I'm glad we got that first one.
I didn't hear what you said.
That's true.
Okay, so, I, I felt that what was throwing me off was the decorations, because to me, I mean, posters, banners, and signs aren't necessarily decorations.
So glad.
To me, decorations are balloons, confettis, streamers, silly string, maybe not so much, but glitter. Um, so if we break that apart and make it to where they require prior approval before coming near the facility. Would that help you, or with, with your balloon issue, because if the elementaries don't have issues with things like balloon or confetti. Then we don't wanna limit the P T A from being able to decorate for whatever function's going on that they're sponsoring.
And there could be rooms where it's totally appropriate at Lakeland High School, just not the commons, you know? Or.
Yeah.
Does that sound, okay.
Ryan answered, so he agrees.
Um, all right, uh, okay, so here we are, all right, um. Users shall not post materials on walls, ceilings, floors, um, unless they're approved materials in advance of use. No signage other than that used for directions, okay. Users are expected to restrict their use and activities to the times and places requested approved in their application. No animals may be brought into, into district facilities during facility use except for required service animals. Okay, so now I'll go down here and find these two. Uh, no school building.
You're right. Fantastic. There are four, they're no longer in place. She knew. She did not know.
It's taken me a while to learn it.
We format text straight. I, I know the key, like the, yeah, I don't know the keystrokes, but I know where to find it. We did, we had this discussion.
Okay, I don't think this is down in the blue area.
Hmm.
These, these two bullet points she added.
No, but maybe she made those spread.
That's okay. But it could just be that I'm also not.
I didn't see.
Oh wait, no, wait, here, here they are.
We commented that we needed to look it up and remember it.
This is why bother, you never use it.
Yeah, obviously, some people use it more and they learn it.
Wait, there it is.
Oh, it's two.
Nope, keep going.
Here we are. And she, these were, this is from ISBA?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Which is interesting, cause I mean, we're, some of our buildings are old inside.
That I was just gonna say. Sorry, they'll give us a placement policy if it becomes a problem, the district's saying no.
So no school building or facility shall be used for any purpose which could result in picketing, rioting, disturbing the peace, or damage to property or for any other purposes, purpose prohibited by law. No access to other rooms or equipment in the building shall be permitted unless designated by, uh, the agreement, okay? Um, special rules.
If we could add in indoor facility use there.
Okay.
So we can separate the indoor from the outdoor.
Is it all on the bottom?
All the outdoor stuff will be after.
Okay.
Using gymnasiums.
All coaches, supervisors, players, parents, and other persons using gymnasiums owned by the district are asked to respect the facilities they use. Any group or organization using the gym is directed to discuss the following rules with each member of the group using the gym. Alright, no eating, drinking, gum chewing permitted in the gym. No, only scuff free gymnasium shoes may be used on the hard gymnasium floors. It is suggested that shoes be cleaned prior to use on the floor. No muddy or wet shoes are allowed on any gymnasium floor. They don't mind therapies and queues over at Mountain View, I'm just gonna say that.
No.
Um, students are to go home before game practice time unless the game or practice is directly after school. Parents should arrange pickup directly after game practice time. No loitering shall be permitted. Sweep the entire floor clean after use. Flush toilets. Turn off lights when closing and complete the gym checklist when furnished. Do we do that?
Do they have a gym checklist?
Do we have a gym checklist?
That's news to me.
Mm-hmm, it's news to me, yeah.
Should we? I'm just curious.
I'm, I'm curious what would be on the gym checklist that isn't on this list right here, like sweep the floor, flush the toilets, like if it's just a practice.
It also states in there many times that it needs to be returned as well as like back to the original setting, so.
Mm-hmm, I hear you, and I wish people would do that.
Kids' parents would get, I'm making their kids up, there's kids loitering around. Like, what happens if they don't?
And who's supervising that?
Well, sometimes we've had custodians that have reported back to us, well, we have kids that were here for two hour, or even an hour, waiting for parents to pick them up. Like, are we gonna expect coaches to wait with parents? Like, I know our school coaches are expected, you know, for some of that, but not necessarily.
Well, I know a lot of times our custodians will move people out of the building, your, your facility use says it ends at eight, you, you gotta go, so.
Yeah, I, and I don't, I mean, I don't know that we can require them to do that, like what you're talking about.
That's a great list, but what happens if it doesn't happen?
Yeah. And we're calling these rules, but whose rules are there? There are rules for somebody that's renting. Um, because they're not students, they may not be students, at least not our students, they're children.
I mean, maybe call them guidelines, I don't know.
Yeah, guidelines would be better. Yeah, so where it says, where it says special rules, should we say special guidelines?
Let's call them expectations.
Okay.
There you go.
Cause that's what they are, we expect them to do this, um.
No eating, drinking, or chewing gum, that's not permitted in the gym. But it is for like, I guess if it's a big mess, we can refer back to that and be like, you guys are losing a huge, you're not supposed to be eating in here, but like, who's policing this? It feels crazy.
No.
Sorry, you have practiced for an hour, you're gonna be sweating, but you don't get to drink. No water bottles. No catering allowed.
I like it, thank you.
Let's shake her head and shout, would you shut up?
I did not say that.
Any group or organization using any indoor facilities is directed to discuss, uh, the following. Oh wait, so.
Expectations are.
Why do we have? Well, this is part of the indoor, this is duplicative.
Cause that was duplicating what was already said.
Okay, what we didn't have up here is turn off lights when closing.
That's right, it's on there.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm blind.
Now, we're talking about flushing toilets?
Yeah, flush toilets.
When it's there.
I know, but, okay.
I suppose it would be a way to check to make sure all your kiddos left in the building as opposed to hung out in the stall, I don't know.
So, I'm just saying, no, we don't want to see that anymore.
Okay.
Now we wanna add in the outdoor facility.
Which is.
Well, you got it.
Is that something they do?
Does it say that on there? So it comes up in this?
Or, so it was the checklist, the checklist for the custodial, they have to be completed.
Yes, we took that out, check it out. Cause we're talking about that, like, we don't have a checklist, we don't ever expect them to check out, custodians would leave, like, if that is an expectation, it hasn't been happening and it seemed a little bit. Sometimes our custodians will check with them, yeah, how long are you gonna be here so we can get in?
Yeah.
Or I thought you were supposed to be out at eight, like.
Exactly, and that working meeting is done, so it's good.
Okay, so the following applies to all district outdoor facility rentals. The rental group shall be responsible for the full replacement cost of any facility or equipment damage. Arrangements for keys for any rented facility must be made prior to the event by contacting the athletic director. Oops, we can't use that. Right. Uh, the procedure for cancellation of outdoor events due to threatening weather and or field conditions is as follows. If field conditions are such that play is not recommended, the athletic director shall notify the rental group as. Oh, thank you, thank you. Shall notify the rental group as far in advance as possible that contests must be canceled. Um, practice field rental will be substituted if possible, and if there is rain the day, we play in snow, of the scheduled contest, the game field rental is considered canceled. And the game fields are not used. Does that happen for baseball?
Mm-hmm.
We do cancel them when it's raining?
Depends on how much, you know, if there's lightning. Well, if the fields are super, yeah, if it's super wet, it's maybe not safe for, it's not good for the fields. It's not just any rain, but it is, yeah, it does happen.
Uh, what about soccer? Cause the kids I know play in rain.
That's a fact, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess what I'm trying to say is that an accurate statement. If there is weather, should we just replace with that and then you're clear with lightning?
Weather would be better, cause.
Anything like that would just be under that umbrella?
In climate weather?
Mm-hmm.
Or, I don't know.
Hazardous weather?
Weather concerns.
Unfair weather. I just figured I'd throw something in.
That's not the sign that you're unfair, seriously.
Cause we didn't cut to sports.
Or a fall sport.
Yeah.
When did we take an L out of cancel? Cause it used to be two L's. I'm just curious, language changes.
It's possible.
I know, I just didn't like that, I would squeal my.
These are music.
That's so confusing.
I know, it needs two L's, it's driving me nuts. Um, I don't know who took it out either. Who decided? Can we add it?
You didn't hear me go.
Okay, so that's to your personal dictionary. So that I don't have to look at it. Say, so if field conditions are such that play is not recommended, the director will notify the rental group as far in advance as possible that the contest must be canceled. Okay, so that's if, then, uh.
Is it weather conditions?
Are such that.
Outdoor use is not recommended.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Can we just combine those two?
We'll see.
Outdoor maker. Well, fantastic. What last line, you take her right there?
She was like, well, Michelle, I went to the coach Lisa, it's cool.
In climate weather, usually refers to severe or harsh weather.
It was cold or wet. You know, it's, let's talk about it.
It's very descriptive, I like it, it's clear.
Excessively.
Well, it's excessively. Um, is there a determinant that, like, Matt uses or?
I just walk out and assess the fields, like you just have, you know.
So it's a subjective opinion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I've just.
Yeah.
But I, but I even like having that option to cancel an event on a soccer field even due to that, just due to the wear and tear of the field.
Yeah, you.
It's super saturated and they're tearing apart.
Yeah, because they play in the rain, because if they don't play on time, they don't play. Um, so I get it, I mean, but I don't like the fact that our fields get destroyed and then we're stuck trying to figure out how do we make it look pretty again.
Or our staff is repairing it after they've used it too, because they're not coming in to do the field maintenance.
Right, exactly.
It means additional wear and tear that is hard to recover from.
On the date, so up above is, uh, basically saying play is not recommended, so I'm assuming practices. And then the second paragraph is specific to a contest. So we call the. Oopsies.
You highlighted way more than.
What's that?
I saw that, I was like, oh, she grabbed more than she wanted.
High school principal or superintendent, in that order. Are your na, are your numbers all given out on the application or to the people?
I think they would just typically call the school.
Okay.
But if something happens on a Saturday, I don't, I don't, I mean, they, it doesn't seem like they have a hard time finding us.
No, like if Matt's the one getting ahold of him and he's not available, he's gonna reach out to someone, yeah.
Does that make sense, or is it more convoluted now?
I think it's good.
Other input?
So if you're canceling though, are you notifying them that I can't use it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yes, we should be.
We do.
It's either myself or the athletic director or activities director, usually, yeah.
We should say. Okay, so at least there is some notice. We have a activities director in there, but if it's you Rebecca, then the district is contacting them.
Yeah.
Should it say the district?
You could add us, add the district in there.
Or instead just say the district in there, doesn't matter who.
And then it doesn't matter.
And that could be the principal, like, did you ever.
Generally, I'm the one who will call and cancel events unless I'm not available.
So that way someone's calling them, we're not just expecting them to read our minds. Um, okay. All equipment items the rental group desires must be listed on the rental agreement and requests for night rentals will be reviewed on a case by case basis, okay? So that's for the outdoor use. Fees for use of facilities. Governmental entities with whom the district has entered into a joint powers agreement will be charged per the approved agreement.
This is where we talked about possibly moving this fee schedule to forty-two-ten F-one towards its own policy so that when we wanna raise the fees every year, we don't have to bring the entire, it could be a set.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Whole section out.
That's what we're asking, if we can do that.
Just do a strike through and just say we wanna take it and it's own separate and then it's just board approval every year.
Mm-hmm. That's what we're hoping for. Have a facility whose fee policy.
Mm-hmm, yes. Well, maybe not a policy, uh, maybe a.
Or a procedure.
Procedure, but it's board approved.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess you could make it a policy and then Michelle, we could just add it to the annual, the annually approved policies. We have a rule list.
Okay.
If you wanted to.
Well, you could just make it a form.
Right, but we have that list already and you could just, those are the ones that we have to look at annually anyways.
And we are, you lowest, right?
And we are the lowest rate of anywhere for facility use.
Okay.
That's why people fight over our gyms.
Yeah.
Like.
Yeah, the district has been before, reevaluated theirs, just before I left, and it was quite the discussion on what areas places we're doing, I was like, as they should, it's a lot of work on people to.
Raising fees?
Yes.
So I just struck out all of those categories. And we'll just state the facility use fee schedule is available in policy, um, forty-two-ten F.
And then I'm gonna add forty-two-ten F to our annual list?
Sure, it should be, there's.
We have F-one and F-two.
As, things cost more.
Yeah, yes. Um, the district recognizes that it is not possible to address every situation or event in these guidelines. As a result, um, these aren't guidelines, these are procedures. That's what we're calling it. As a result, the district allows for exceptions to be made on an individual basis as determined by the specific merits of each situation. Requests for such exceptions must be addressed to the superintendent or designee for evaluation and discussion. Oh, thank you, yeah, cause I can't read you, that's all good. Alright.
So then we would strike through this whole thing, cause we're gonna take it.
We're gonna make it its own specialty along with the other fees.
Yeah, that's where she has the crop references.
Okay.
And then, so that would go. And then we're down to the IFD stuff.
Okay. Um, wait, did I just do that?
It might not be, cause it's a chart. Not text.
You're not.
Oh, there it is.
Oh, nice.
I poked a button.
Like, I don't know if we do it as a.
Applications requesting use of school facility must be presented to building principal at least ten days. Okay, so this is what's in the front of our. Oh. No, but we have that somewhere else.
It's, it mirrors what we started with at the beginning, so it's, I mean, common language, but it's not the same.
This is all our ten-day stuff right there.
Okay, well, let's read it and see if we need to pull any of it out of there, I guess. And must be signed by a qualified representative of the organization desiring to use the building. When considering facility use applications, the following should be taken into consideration. The activity should not interfere, okay? The content of the activity should be reasonably appropriate in a school setting. Event is not in conflict with the health and safety of the district or community, and does not violate any federal, state, or local ordinances. I don't know if we have that set up there. Um, the user agrees to follow all health and safety protocols outlined in the district. The event may not be held by the district in support or in opposition of any candidate or ballot measure. If the district permits, uh, facilities rental by any entity or person seeking to hold a meeting in support or opposition to any candidate or ballot measure, the denial or approval of such rental cannot be based on the, upon the content of the position of the entity or the person seeking to hold a meeting and shall likewise make rental options equally available to the counter entity or person if they seek to rent the school facilities.
Or, say the other one.
The event may not be held in support or opposition of a candidate or ballot measure, okay? The user agrees to follow all health and safety protocols outlined by the district.
I thought I saw that's in it.
Oh, see how fun that is? There we go.
So is this one one?
So we are excited that this is for this is like, is involved.
Hmm, or served, okay.
That's a wrong for the suggestion, we choose either this paragraph or this one, is that what that was involved?
Right to decline use, we don't have this.
I think it's in.
And we use eat, either of those situations.
Uh, the use of school premise will be denied when, in the opinion of the superintendent or the board, such use may be construed to be solely for commercial purposes when there is probability of damage or injury to school property, or when the activity is deemed to be improper to hold in school buildings, or if it conflicts with any federal, state, or local public health ordinance or district health policy or procedure.
Okay.
So. Let's take this. And we can put it.
I wish there was language where we could deny, um, like, when somebody threatens us, or.
Well, in this.
Does that cover that?
Might, I mean, this could be exceptions instead of right to, to decline use.
Yeah, cause I've been dealing with a lot of that lately.
Yeah.
Huh?
Yeah, you're right.
Okay. So I do think, um, possibly there was some stuff up here I don't think we have, language-wise in there. Fees. Just casually making additional adjustments.
So should this fee with the fee?
Um, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Form?
Let's just take this, let's just do this. Fees may be waived by the superintendent or designee in consideration of services rendered by public institutions or nonprofit organizations in direct support of public school students or staff. Do we do that?
We have not done, no.
Okay. Is there opportunities to waive the fees, I mean, is that kind of a standard practice, does anybody know?
Hmm, I guess we could, we just don't, do we?
Okay.
Um, it is six twenty-nine.
Oh, yeah, it's six thirty.
So in respect to everybody's time, I know we're close to being done, we just wanna put this one on hold.
So is the board gonna review the fees then and come up with a fee schedule?
We will, I mean, and then we give it to the board, and the board weighs in on.
Gotcha, so we.
So we're gonna set us, we're gonna set up a forty-two-ten, forty-two-ten F.
Yeah.
And I've already, um, been going to neighboring districts and gathering what they're charging for this, so that we can stay competitive.
Alright, perfect.
But before we shut down, just to recap, um, I'm gonna bring policy forty-four-ten up. We're surveying thirty-five-fifty, thirty-five-fifty fee, I'm gonna find the joint powers and the MOU. We're gonna leave policy thirty-five-forty-five on there, cause we're gonna review the comments, and then we'll add a sheet for forty-ten F.
Yep.
With this, yeah?
Perfect, yeah. Alright.
Thank you guys all for coming, we really tried to start again on time.
It is six thirty.